Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning.
Welcome to the whole meeting this morning. Everybody is here together, everybody is virtual. We'll have a public comment at the end of the meeting. We want to discuss more at that time we can. Other than that, we'll get down to business this morning. We'll have a lot of stuff on there, but stuff you can go over. I'll call these the order. We'll have a roll call by Matt Cook Fettig.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Commissioner Goodchild.
Here.
Commissioner Bardwell.
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Here.
Commissioner Lutz.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
You have a quorum. You may proceed.
Thank you, yep. All right, we'll get down to business. We just got one thing that we're gonna put out there. We're gonna put it under, and we're gonna put it in the financial to Erica. I'm a little financial. We'll just stick that there for about.
Where would you like that, Chairman?
Um, on the financial part of the meeting.
So under finance and technology, it'll be primary number one.
Yep.
And what should we title that?
Erica's presentation or something. She just handles the financials from the floor, so we'll keep.
What would you title that? I'm sorry.
Financial report.
Through July 31st?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you, Chair.
Other than that, what do you have? Let me jump into new business. Tuscola Behavioral Health System, TBHS, overview proposal changes. Julie Majeski, chief executive officer.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Thank you for the time on your agenda this morning. I'm Julie Majeski, the CEO for Tuscola Behavioral Health Systems. I'm joined by Sheila Kennedy, who's our chief operating officer. And we're here this morning to share some information with you regarding proposed changes to the mental health system in Michigan by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. We're also here to ask for your consideration of a resolution opposing the changes after we go through and talk about those. So to start, we do have a brief PowerPoint just to give you some history on how the system currently operates. So currently, Michigan's specialty behavioral health care system provides mental health services to approximately 300,000 individuals, including adults with serious mental illness, children with severe emotional disturbance, individuals with co-occurring substance use disorders, and individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. These services are provided through a state and county partnership that was established over 60 years ago. In Tuscola County, we serve nearly 1,000 Tuscola County residents and their families who depend on the public mental health system for both acute and long-term supports and services. Tuscola Behavioral Health Systems, we are the Community Mental Health Services Program, the CMH, for Tuscola County, and we've been providing community-based mental health care for over 50 years. So a little more about how the system is established. To ensure the delivery of these mental health services, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services currently contracts with 10 regional entities known as prepaid inpatient health plans, or PIHPs for short. They manage the Medicaid behavioral health benefit under a car model of Medicaid. Under the current structure, the PIHPs then contract with the Community Mental Health Services Programs in their designated regions through county-based partnerships between the PIHP and the CMH. For Tuscola County, we are part of Region 5, which is Mid-State Health Network, PIHP, otherwise known as MISSION, which contains 12 CMHs representing 21 counties. We, TBHS, and Tuscola County, have been a part of the MISSION region since 2014. However, the PIHP structure itself has been in existence since 1998. So through the CMH and PIHP arrangement, the CMH provides service delivery that's focused on the unique needs of each individual community. They manage their local provider networks as the designated public government authority consistent with the Michigan Mental Health Code, being responsible for managing and delivering the full scope of public mental health services. This includes functions such as provider network management, provider network training, processing claims, authorizing care, carrying out utilization management, provincial and staff, and other related functions. In many cases, the CMHs have spent several years building relationships with their local providers through extensive collaborative efforts, which is particularly crucial in rural communities like ours, where resources and specialty service providers are more limited. Here in Tuscola County, our provider network includes some small local providers who deliver services and employ direct care staff within this community. These are not large corporations, but rather local providers who know the community, they understand the needs, and they work to support some of our most vulnerable residents. We also have established partnerships with other human service agencies and work cooperatively to meet the needs of mutually served beneficiaries and to respond to identified community needs. So the local DHHS, probation, the schools, we partner with a lot of different folks in the community to meet the needs of residents. In February, says a little bit about the current system, now I will talk about the proposed changes. So in February, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services announced its intention to move to a competitive procurement process for those prepaid inpatient health plan contracts in Michigan, essentially restructuring the behavioral health system as we know it today, changing it from the way it has been for several decades. At this time, MDHHS is proposing to reduce the number of PIHP regions from 10 down to three and to competitively bid the PIHP contracts for those new regions, opening the door to the potential for privatization of Michigan's public mental health system. Privatization would transfer oversight from locally governed county-based entities to commercial entities with no accountability to the local community. Under the proposed procurement requirements, the county CMHs, such as us, would no longer have a role in governance, administration, or funding for public mental health services. The procurement process would essentially move the decisions about mental health care and funding further from the communities they serve and result in the CMH simply becoming one of a network of fee-for-service providers in the new managed care organizations' network. There are some key concerns with the proposed procurement. I did distribute a document that was put together from the Community Mental Health Association of Michigan, noting what some of those concerns are. I won't go through all of them in detail today, but there are a few things that I would like to highlight as far as it relates to this proposed procurement process and transferring this potentially to a commercial entity. So the first thing I'd like to point out is this doesn't eliminate an administrative layer in Michigan's public mental health system. Instead, it replaces a public managed care system with low cost, relatively low cost. The current PIHPs in Michigan, their administrative overhead is approximately 2%. It replaces them with private managed care system that's far more costly, on average 15% administrative overhead, which results in a difference of approximately $500 million that will be diverted away from services for individuals and families in need of those behavioral health systems, or, excuse me, services, because those systems would take that right off the top and admin. So we're currently at a 2% admin. It would go to a 15. The 13% difference is approximately $500 million. It prioritizes bids from private nonprofit health plans, so commercial health insurance companies. Some of Michigan's largest health plans and health insurance companies are private nonprofit organizations, so Blue Cross Blue Shield, Priority Health, McLaren Health Plan House, some of which operate outside of our region and even outside of our state. The current PIHPs and the CMHs would be prohibited from bidding on this opportunity as they're currently structured, due to being formed and governed by acquaintances from the state CMHs, who are providers as required by law of mental health services. So the way we are currently structured in terms of our board, the PIHP board, with the way that this procurement is proposed, we would be, in our current formation, prohibited from bidding on the opportunity. The proposed plan permits a new PIHP contractor to be a commercial health insurance company and mandates that it operate as a care-only entity. It prohibits delegation of core managed care functions like utilization management, network development, claims processing. So when I was talking a minute ago about these local provider networks, some of these small providers, like some who run adult foster care homes, these are large corporations. They're local providers here who are caring for folks. We would not be able to manage our own provider network. It would be managed by whoever is awarded the bid. If that's a large commercial insurance plan in another state, they would, excuse me, have to do the provider network development, the provider network training, the claims processing, a lot of those things that we have been doing for quite some time. It essentially privatizes a core governmental function, allowing the private entity to take over the statutory duties of a CMH and prohibiting the CMH from performing its role as defined in the Michigan Mental Health Code. In the Michigan Mental Health Code, it talks about these partnerships between the state and the county, and then the county and the CMH. For us, you established us as a governmental authority several years ago, and so we have the tasks of a health code that we are required to do, and this would be in direct conflict with that. It also eliminates transparency currently guaranteed by law. By law, the Open Meetings Act and Freedom of Information Act apply to public bodies, ensuring a high degree of transparency. A community health insurance plan is not a public body. While the department can require a contractor to act transparently, this contractual obligation is not the same as the force of law. So we are required by law to adhere to FOIA, to adhere to the Open Meetings Act, these large commercial health plans, even though contractually they may require them to act transparent, transparently, it is not the same as force of law. This structure undermines the public accountability inherent in the CMH-led system established by the Mental Health Code. The current public PIHP/CMH structure is directly accountable to elected county commissioners, elected in each county, served by the PIHP. The MDHHS proposal would remove involvement of these county officials in managing the medic paid dollars intended to serve their communities. Those dollars would be managed by whoever's awarded the bid. If that's a large commercial health plan, they would control those dollars. The proposed plan dictates a specific private-style corporate governance structure for the PIHP contractor. It mandates a board of no more than 15 members that must be entirely separate from any provider entity. Chapter 2 of the Mental Health Code provides explicit and detailed requirements for the public appointment and composition of CMHSP, so the CMH boards. These are public bodies with members, primary and secondary consumers, appointed by county commissioners, making them directly accountable to the local government and public. So changing that governance, they cannot have any provider entity, so even if they contracted with us as a provider for some local services, we could not have anyone appointed to their board. Ultimately, this is about individuals and families in our communities who rely on these services, who are very concerned about the proposed outsourcing of local behavioral health care decisions, moving those decisions about care, about funding, and oversight further from the local communities that they serve, and potentially compromising service quality and accountability. The ongoing need for the care is going to be there. The mental health need is not going to go away in our local communities. However, it may mean that these folks, if they have challenges and obstacles to getting those services through, let's say it's awarded to a commercial health plan, are still going to end up somewhere in the county, whether that's through the emergency departments, whether that's in the jail system. The need is not going away just because they're restructuring. I've asked Sheila if she could speak to this morning, a consumer example or example with a provider, of what this may look like here locally as it relates to this change.
Good morning. So, as Julie stated, currently, if somebody is in a mental health crisis, they have typically an assigned either therapist or case manager, so they have that ability to come right into one of our buildings and speak with their therapist, speak with that person, and get that immediate need met. Under this proposed change, what we anticipate happening is that person would be in a mental health crisis, but we would have to get a preauthorization, similar to when you go through things with your insurance company now, to get authorized to get that service to then move forward. So we really anticipate that there'd be some extra bureaucratic red tape that would be involved in obtaining those services, because right now, like Julie said, we have some of that control locally, but we don't have that control, so we would have to get a preauthorization to ensure that that service is a covered benefit under the new proposed changes. So those are the things that we're concerned about. We already know that a concern is access to care. Just lengthening that access to care for somebody from a private organization is just really troubling to us as a public mental health system, so. It would be equivalent to if the sheriff, his funding was dictated by a private insurance company, and before he could do anything, he'd have to go through and get that authorization to be able to provide that service to the community. So much like that, that's what we're facing as a community mental health agency. So we definitely are looking for your support.
In addition, you know, there is a question, what does this mean for these small mom-and-pop providers, these local community providers, who have done a good job caring for this in this community? They're used to walking into our office, picking up the phone and calling, emailing us if they have a concern with somebody that they're serving, if they have a contract question. These are partnerships that have been established for many, many years. We don't know what that will look like for them when they receive a 300-page contract from a commercial health insurer, and they have questions, or they have somebody who's struggling, and they're like, hey, you know, I'd like to continue to serve this person, but we're gonna need some help. Could you send somebody out today, or at the latest tomorrow, could you call a person-centered planning meeting to see how we can meet this person's needs, keep them safe, keep the community safe? They're used to an immediate response from us, a partnering with them to deliver the care and the services needed. So as I stated, there's other concerns that are noted in that CMHA document that I distributed. These are just some of the things that I wanted to touch on this morning. At this time, there is growing opposition to this procurement proposal, including the Michigan Association of Counties. They expressed their concerns to Governor Whitmer in a letter dated May 15, 2025, and I've also included that in your packets. As of last week, we were informed that there are approximately 25 counties who have adopted resolutions opposing the bid out of the specialty mental health system in Michigan. Our Board of Directors also adopted a resolution at their last board meeting. I also have a copy of that in your packet, because we are very concerned, as Sheila noted, about the changes that this would bring about and what this would mean to the residents of Tuscola County and, you know, especially those individuals and families who rely on these services daily. And we're not saying that we're not in support of ongoing opportunities for improvement. We support ongoing opportunities for system improvement and are committed to enhancing access quality and accountability of mental health services for individuals and families served, but through a collaborative process that involves all stakeholders. So we believe that maintaining a publicly accountable and locally governed behavioral health system is essential to ensuring our most vulnerable residents with mental health and substance use needs receive timely, appropriate, and quality care.
Any questions? We have questions here.
Chair, I have just one quick one. Do you have the proposed resolution in Word format?
I've already shared it with Erica last week.
Is it in Word format?
Yes.
Do you know? Okay, great. Erica, if you can get that to me, we can customize it.
Yes, I was planning, yes, I was planning to wait till after this meeting, make sure that the commissioner wanted to move forward, and then, yes, you are next on the list.
Great, yep. And if you ever give that packet, we'll talk about how to, so that we can coordinate that. So, great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and it is the same resolution that our board adopted on July 24th. There's a copy in your packet as well.
Chair, I have a few comments. From a board's perspective, I've been seated on this board for a number of years now and have a great understanding of the mental health needs of this county. It's something that's not decreasing in any county or nationwide, it is increasing. If there's any pause that you want to start thinking about, just remember the regional center and the battle we had. And having met the new administrator last week, they're full. They have no place to put anybody. They're very much under duress. Take that and move that forward, to the mere fact that this board's been faced with other, other states' quest for decentralizing or centralizing services at the county level. Now think about that, whether it be gravel pit or materials management. This is just one of many. I think the key phrase here that was said earlier, you just said, and we've all been there on the board, you lose local control of your residents' care. Why the state's doing this, you can only imagine, but certainly from a cost perspective, getting preauthorizations, you're familiar with that process, is a mine down there and really is not anything to do with quality of care. Unfortunately, this has gained a lot of traction, and from a MAC perspective, as the professor said, they were, they are against it. However, there is, well, the current administration, huge effort to push this through, much like, perhaps it could happen, just like the zoning, local zoning, that was taken away from certain aspects of those townships, the energy. So I caution everyone, and I don't think I have to caution everyone, that what Sheila and Julie have presented is very important to the citizens in those counties, and we retain the local control. I don't remember of anyone challenging this county, and you two would know better than anyone of a poor service or lack of service or some issue that was major.
No, the system as it is now actually performs very well. That is monitored through the department, and there are key performance indicators that were measured against routinely, and the system overall does perform very well. Like I said, not to say that there's not opportunities for system improvements, which we would fully support with all the key stakeholders around the table in a collaborative process, not done separately outside of that process. The timeline, which I forgot to mention as it relates to this, is they're looking to have the bids submitted by the end of September with an award around February of 2026, and this will start October 1st of next year. So this is a major system transformation, a very aggressive timeline within the next year.
Is this something that needs to go through the House or something?
No, because previously, there have been efforts over the years to privatize the mental health system, and some of those went through that process. This is coming directly from one department, which is the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. It's coming directly out of that department, so it is not going through the legislative process. That's part of the concern with this, is this is being done through just one department, and it is bypassing all of that. And as I noted earlier, it is in direct conflict with certain parts of the Mental Health Code as it relates to community mental health agencies and PIHPs managing the system, delivering these services, and only if the CMH in the community shows that it is unable or unwilling to do so, is it supposed to go outside of that system locally.
And we have to, as we're, you know, there's so many things about that cover where they're trying to take local control, like Commissioner Whitmer said. This is another fine example. They seem to pick and choose what has to get legislative approval and don't, depends what they think side of the legislative arm. But, yeah, this is something we need to be close, as we do with everything, that they try to take local control. You know, zoning for our townships and...
I know the kind of decisions and the kind of things that we assist the individuals we serve with on a daily basis, things that we aid them with. I can't imagine having them go to call someone in another state who's completely unfamiliar with their care, their circumstances, what the county resources are, and try to navigate that when they're already struggling.
Well, you don't have local control, like the board, because you have nobody to turn to, and they're bad.
Absolutely.
And that's the biggest thing, obviously. You have nobody to go to. The more they take away from the locals, where we can help, or townships can help, or anybody can help, is not good. Any more questions, Julie? Any more follow-up questions? Move forward on a resolution? I would, I support a resolution. Yeah. Sign out a board of it, and do more, you know, and get all the people who start, you know, locally being concerned.
Can we have one of them set for Thursday, resolution?
I'd like to see that, and the TBH board would like to see it as well.
And there are some advocacy efforts being done by the Community Mental Health Association that we can certainly, you know, pass along as well, that has a nice QR code, and it develops the letter. You can personalize the letter to the legislative body of Michigan, or you can send it as is. So it would be something that we could definitely get out, so you guys could, you know, use that as a platform as well.
I would like that.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Given that I wanted to ask a question, isn't this conceivable, I know it is, is that if this should go through, that those consumers who have needs would have to go seek care or be assigned care a far distance from where they perhaps live?
Perhaps.
Is that not true? And what do you think? And do you think that's like a 60% across the board for the consumers we have, or?
It really, it really depends, because each of their service needs vary. I mean, it could go up significantly if you have these smaller providers that are in our current network, that are based here in Tuscola County, if they say, we can't, we can no longer provide. We can't be a provider under this large commercial entity. If you start losing that network of specialized food products, if you start losing some of these other networks, I could see that increasing significantly, because we don't have other settings right now within this county. It's already that sometimes we have to go outside of county to find placements for folks, to help them with those specialized needs. So I agree, yes, it's probable, I don't know the exact percentage, but I can tell you that percentage will increase if we lose our local providers on top of this, or as a result of this.
Chair, I was just saying that, well, state level, they have bigger concerns about mental health than this, and certainly from the regional center aspect and the fact that there's no place to place people, and other than in communities, in homes and whatnot, and whatnot, which, as well as the local jails, it's a deplorable situation that they're circling their vagons on a particular area that I just don't understand the importance in lieu of what's happening statewide in terms of placements and need. The worst of the worst are out there, the forensics. There's no room anywhere. And interesting enough, I was in a group the other day, and that's where you're from, and the, they were, I'll call them consumers, and the leader, the person, we can't tell you. I thought, oh, that's, that's interesting. You can't, I just want to know if he's from Carroll or wherever. So that's the degree, and they were, they were a great group to be around, but I just find it perplexing. And I know you do too, because we've had these discussions, it's, it's, they seem to be focusing on something that, that really doesn't have the overall benefit as indeed greater statewide placement, and places to put people that have mental that have mental health issues versus the jail cell. Back to you, Sharon.
Thank you, ladies, for coming in this morning, Sharon, for this. We'll get that Thursday to them as a second word. Any word of likes that you could give this office of advocates or if it have meetings or somewhere, or through meetings or protests, you know, anything that you could so long this office that helps the board to get engaged with this, the matter.
Sharon, I have one last question. Where's the rubber hit the road here? I know we have a resolution, many counties have produced our resolutions. Who, where does the decision actually make?
As far as, I mean.
DHS?
Well, Michigan Department of Health and Services is obviously the one proposing this, the one going to make the decision on the bid. It'll, I would anticipate, you'll start to see some legal advocacy coming as well. I would anticipate that probably in the future as this progresses.
And that's between now and next October, now and October?
Now and next October, October 26th is when this contract would be effective. So let's just say it's a very aggressive timeline to have the, you know, to release the bid, which just came out last week, to have responses to the bid, to award that and to make this entire system transformation in that short amount of time with the number of people who are depending on these services. So yeah, it's a very short timeline.
And a change in administration too will be coming from MDHS as well, just prior to when the change would need to be implemented.
Yes, the administration will be changing.
Right.
This will be happening in October.
Right.
No further questions.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, ladies. Was she to request for a purchase agreement? Larry, is that fine?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Larry.
Commissioners, I'm just here this morning to ask for approval to accept a purchase agreement between Valant Bioscience and Tuscula County. Valant supplies us with all of our larviciding products. These are the products we use in our flooded woodlots and any standing water throughout the county. We've been doing business with, with Valant now for well over 15 years. Their products work well. And they're, they're fully organic as well. Valant has proposed a, a purchase agreement for the 2026 season and the 2027 season. You, you may recall, we did a similar purchase agreement back in 2023, 24 and 25. It's, it's basically a, a locked in price for these products for, for these two years. There is no certain amount of product we're required to purchase. It's simply, it's simply an offer, kind of an extending, extending of the hand to us to, to lock in a price. We would see a 3% purchase or 3% price increase from 2025 this year to 2026. 2026 would be a, a 3% increase. 2027, we'd see a 3.5% increase. I personally like this agreement. I wish I could get all our vendors to do this. This helps me so much for, for budgeting. I know exactly what it's going to cost when I figure out what, what we're going to need for a season. And I, I really appreciate Valant reaching out to us to to make this request. This, uh, this, this agreement or proposal will also be extended to Midland and Bay County as well. They're going to receive the, the same agreement or contract, but that's, that's all that I have for you regarding that, if you have any questions on that.
Any questions for Larry or for CX?
Perfect, I appreciate that. Commissioners, if you don't mind, I, I, can I give you a brief department update real quick? Yep, is that okay? No. As you may know, July was a tough month for us with all the, the heavy rains we had and the, the heat that all seemed to kick in at one time. It was all hands on deck during the month of July. Unfortunately, during that time, we had three technicians that we were missing, we had one that left for, for a different job, and we had two that were off for health reasons. So we were scrambling trying to keep up with all the, all the requests for the yard treatments and, and whatnot. I was even out there truck fogging myself in the evenings. I'll admit, I was a little rusty, took me a little bit to get in the groove again. But we got the job done and I, I just wanted to say thank you to all my employees who worked so much overtime. We worked, we worked overtime during our regular work week, we worked all Saturdays and we even worked a Sunday trying to keep up with all the requests and, and I want to say thank you to our, our residents as well. Thank you for your patience. I know it, it took us a while to get to some of those, some of those, those requests, but we, we definitely were, we're doing the best we could. That's, that's for sure. The, the only thing, other thing I wanted to bring up, back in July, we, we did receive our first positive pool that tested positive for the, the West Nile virus. That was July 17th, and that was in Denmark Township. I was notified late last week that we've received three others as well. There was a positive pool that was discovered again in Denmark Township as well as Fair Grove Township and Indian Fields Township. This is, this is not an uncommon thing for Tuscula County. We usually pick up the West Nile virus either through a bird or through a, through a test pool every, every season. I, I just want to make you aware that we are, we are focusing on these areas with, with more treatment efforts as well as testing. And we'll, we'll continue to, to keep going, obviously, with all of our testing through the remainder of the season. Starting in August here, we're, we're kind of getting into a little, a little more of a dry part of our season, which is, is definitely helping. It's, it's, it's kind of slowing down a lot of the, the yard request. And it's helping us to keep up, but I just wanted to, again, say, say thank you to everyone that has, that has helped us out. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Wes.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Move on to number three, I remember, this is for second 2024 annual report. Mr. Mike Motherborough on the ground.
Morning, Fishers.
Morning.
Mikey.
I want to keep this short, most of this is pretty self-explanatory. I do want to give credit, Beth Hoppy, my assistant director and educator is the one that prepared and put this report together. Because that's why it looks so good, if I'd have done it, you would have been wondering what the heck was going on. But be that as it may, if you would flip open to the 24 financial summary, this is really the meat of the report. In 24, we pulled out some highlights from our revenue. And our total revenues were $437,000. And also the expenses was $379,000. And estimated fund balance at the beginning of 24 was $260,000, $260,000. It was a pretty good year for recycling in our department. We did, the sale of materials was pretty high. It's unfortunately, it's come down this year. There's a few items that are pretty high right now, like whatever number two plastic natural, like your milk jugs. We got a really good price when we shipped those out earlier this year. But overall, the prices have dipped down. And what, it's not uncommon, it's, recycling prices go up and down constantly. It's almost like the price of gas, it just depends which way the winds blowing that day, honestly. Next page, the materials recycled. We have a breakdown of some of the products that we, we ran through the center that year. And down at the bottom, she did a nice comparison between last year and 23. And overall, we were up a little bit. We did 1.4 million pounds, I'm sorry, 1.1 million pounds this, in 24, which is a little bit more than we did last year, or actually in 23. I see that number dropping a little bit and we talked about it and we're not sure why. It doesn't seem like we've slowed down any. Some of the reasons could be they're making materials lighter. Don't know, but at this point in time, we should be a little further ahead than where we are, but still a lot of time left in the year to make up some numbers. Where do we, where does everything go? We can safely say that 99.9% of all of our product stays in Michigan. And we list some of the locations where most of our material goes. Very rarely do we ship out of the state. And if we are, it's usually like a plastic that we, actually, we just shipped plastic with Santa Lat County. They needed some, we needed to make a load full, they had extra product, we combined them, and that did go out of the state. But we do work with Santa Lat quite a bit on shipping product, just to make a full load. Plastic's difficult, you know, to ship a plastic or actually anything. Retailers want a 40,000 pound load and sometimes that's difficult to achieve without storing it for a long time. And unfortunately, plastic begins to break down and prices go down. So we work with Santa Lat a lot to try to keep product moving. Next page is what we call our satellite trailer. This is a trailer that is a man trailer that goes out to Mayville on Thursdays and Cass City on Friday. And she has it broke down. In, in 22, we collected a little over 36,000 pounds. 23, we collected 43,000 pounds and 24, we collected just over 44,000 pounds. So that program continues to do well. And honestly, Cass City is one of our bigger participants in that. And what we find interesting is that Cass City has a curbside program. But we get a lot of response from Cass City residents. We get a lot of people coming from Huron County down to Cass City too, to take advantage of that. So that, that might be what pushes that number up, but it's still a pretty popular program. And then the next page is our hazardous waste collection, which we do from May 1st through October 1st. And Beth broke down in the pie chart there how that breaks out. We jokingly call it really a paint collection because just about everything we collect is paint. It's a, it's kind of like tires, everybody's got paint stacked up in their basement and at some point you want to get rid of it. And we can do that through that program. Other than that, that's about it. If I'm happy to answer any questions, you may have.
Any questions for Mike Mother on the second report? I don't know if they're quite regularly.
What's that?
I don't know if they're quite regularly.
You are, yes, you're very, you're there a lot.
All right, we can, yeah, develop that. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Thanks, Mike, Shadet. Do higher requests for, I hope that's for Ian Lee.
First, this is a vacant position. Unfortunately, we had to let go of the past employee of this group. We don't speak about here, but this is necessary and crucial position for our, for our operations. So I have a candidate in mind, he's passed his background and fingerprints, or you'll get his fingerprints, we should be allowed, so.
Questions for Ian, a request? CAF? Number two under old business.
Number one, that's right. At the bottom of page one of your agenda.
Oh, okay. I have my page flipped already.
I know, that's okay. Thanks, Sharon.
Number one, dispatch potential by language down in Mass.
Morning, Fishers.
Morning.
I understand we are coming together this morning to discuss language for the August 2026 ballot. I guess I'm at the steering of, of the board, how would we like to proceed with discussing this? We have the language that's been approved by legal. We can go ahead and talk about the numbers. I just have, my concerns are if we put it on paper now, are we restricted to, I don't want to say change our mind, but change that number according to the market or according to the values later? Because we have, at this point, not entered contract negotiations that probably will start in October. We, we just have some concerns if, if we outright name a mileage rate.
I think we got time to, you know, let it just more and make sure when we get
I agree. I agree. Okay, I, I think what, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, my perception or my belief is that we just want to reassure the public that we are doing this in August of 26.
Right.
So I guess, would you like this language with those number values blank? Or how would?
It cannot be approved with the number values blank. So there's, in order to approve that, you would need to have the numbers filled in. You know, I don't know when contract negotiations will be done, so I don't know if you want to put something together to, as a placeholder, so it doesn't fall between the cracks? To re-review that maybe December or January to look at?
Which, which we could do, we can put a placeholder. I, I've heard read this film about falling through the cracks.
I, I promise you as well.
Well, we all can promise that, but if all the same players aren't at the table, I have seen things like that fall between the cracks before, so in, in experience, I would just, I think it's better, as we've watched Erica try to backtrack things. Things in writing is always better, Ms. Tippel, so I just that's just, the only reason I recommend it is from past history.
Which, which, by the time I'm using, you know, so we can put this on the placeholder and we can put December or right at the first year. It's time to get back into this discussion and get everything together, what we feel we're going to need. You might have a better idea of that, where we're at. What you think is going to be sufficient to, to ask the voters for? That's my opinion, recommendation, but all board members, I think, December, or is that your view?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a problem with that. So Madam Clerk, you're saying that if we were to approve this, we cannot change it?
That's a legal question as to the steps that you would need to do to retract a ballot proposal and re-change it, so that I would defer to legal counsel.
But you said if you, you know, we need numbers to approve.
You can't approve it with blanks.
I understand that.
Yeah, if you approve it with numbers and then decide to change it, that would go to legal counsel for them to advise you as to the proper steps that you need to do to withdraw that.
Just wait till after the first of the year.
So would we like that on our first committee meeting in January?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, I'm silent because I'm waiting for the financial report which I have reviewed, hasn't changed any. But I don't have any questions at this time.
So let's put it back first meeting in January.
Okay, you'll be ready. I promise we won't let this go to bed without talking about it.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Number two is the interim phase step up for human resource director. Number two is the interim pay step up for human resource director, and human, he's a finance and system economic administrator. We have a motion on that.
I don't believe, uh, additional motion is needed for the return to regular pay due to the motion from December 23, 2024, for, um, HR, for Shelley and Angie. The motion, um, in 24 states, as soon as a controller administrator is hired, they would return. So if that, if the board would like a different motion, we can definitely address that. But I don't, personally, I don't believe it's needed.
Yeah. That motion's kind of, sort of, wants to be updated.
Unless you wanted something for clarity, um, to state the effective date, just for history and tracking, that just says per motion, this, um, a controller administrator has been hired, and per the motion, the changes are effective August 4th. If you would prefer to just have something like that, rather than trying to have to go back and research, that would be my only question for clarity. But that is up to the board.
I think it's fine the way it is.
So just in clarity, Chairman, it was retroactive. I mean, it was, took effect, um, last, whenever it took office. I agree, Commissioner.
I think it's good, it's, the board considers that it's fine.
And it was effective August 4th. I will at least put that in the minutes so that we have it. That's correct. And, um, when HR does the payroll change, they will include a copy of the previous motion with the payroll change notice in the personnel file. Great. Thank you. And that's standard operating procedure.
Okay. That takes us through Old Business. We're moving to finance and technology, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Bardwell.
Thank you, Chair. As I recall, item one is Erica's presentation.
Yes, I did not, uh, make it in time to give it to, um, the digital format, so I apologize. Um, this is, again, how we worked in the finance meeting. This is a draft, um, report. The report is true data. However, if there's additional data that you would like on this report, or you would like things changed, I am open and be happy to change the report going forward. I noted a few things on here, um, such as, uh, materials management, uh, the 217 fund. So it does not show a budget. There isn't approved budget in play. However, there are some cleanup items that need to be addressed before we can finalize those. So I just noted the things that we are already working on as to why those numbers will be updated in the future. And I also, um, highlighted in yellow the percentage used year-to-date as of 731. And if it is above the 58.08 percentage, which is where we would land for July, if it is above that, I made that red for you. And that was, I was referring at that time to the 11-page document. I apologize for not being clear. On the short document, that is just the general fund. And the yellow is, again, over the 58.08 percentage, um, per department. The green is, they are at, um, they're at a higher percentage, however, it's expected. For example, the transfers out is 72%, which is higher than the 58%. However, we do transfers out quarterly, so we've already processed three quarters of the year, so the 72% is on track.
Where's Erica? Where are you pulling that from?
On the one page, uh, general fund report, um, the very, of the first section, last item 965.
Erica, I like the percentages.
Thank you.
Erica, um, Chairman?
Yes.
Erica, on the very bottom of page one of, of the single page report...
Yes.
It has the year-to-date balance of 731, a negative 4 million, and, and the other column, 25 amended budget. And it has a percentage, 7562.57.
That's not a percentage, uh...
What is that? The only way you get that is divide 58,702 into 4439. What relevant says that?
This was out of BSNA. I am not familiar. I do not know what that percent, what that is. I apologize.
But would you check your numbers when you hand out some? Because that is, that is all the way through the other report as well, because if you just take, for instance, trying to figure out earlier mosquito abatement when that presentation's being, was being made, same thing, 80977, which is on page four of, page 11 of the fourth. Um, it doesn't make sense, as you just indicated. The other thing is, what I'm reading, is this true that at the bottom of page one, the 4439 is a deficit, um, as a 731? Meaning that, looking at all the revenues and the expenses, I know maybe there's revenues that not recognized yet, but the expenses, the transfers out, um, should we be concerned with that 4439, 37821? In other words, if we take a picture of our finances right now, and this is what Clay at maybe is working on, I don't know, where are we at mid-year? It's been projected a 651,000 loss this year. Um, the question is, where are we at?
So I would not be concerned greatly over that 4439. And the reason is, as you stated, we have not received all of the revenues expected. We're only at 31% of revenue, but that is normal for this type of year, because the summer tax have not yet been collected. So...
And if we did collect summer tax, I mean, is this a normal percentage this time of the year, you're saying? Because that's 31%, and this is almost September, uh, a lot of revenue has to come in the last quarter. At the same time, there's a lot of outflows that, as you mentioned earlier. That's my concern, is the relevancy. You would think at this point in time, I would be worried if this is my budget, at 31% of the revenue received. I'd like to know what 80, what 20% of the revenue coming in makes up 80% of what we're going to get.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Commissioner Bardwell, if you take the 17132, which is the amended budget, and multiply it by 27%, which is fiscal year completed of 58%, minus 31, that's $4.6 million, which more than makes up for the 4439 deficit. If that's what you were trying to do.
That would be more relevant.
Yes, correct.
I mean, in terms of, of trying to determine, when you see rev, that, this amount, that's the first thing that one would think is, wait a minute, and the 31% revenues received so far, where's the other 80% of the 20% of those items that are coming in that would give us our revenue? Um, all right, just a, a point there.
Would you like to see, um, a July 24 compared to July 25 report? I did create one, but I did not want to, uh, bombard you with many different reports. Would you like to see how 25 is comparing to 24?
I, I think that would be appropriate, especially if it was a summary report, in terms of, with an end in mind, especially at the end, net revenues over expenditures. Um, yes, I mean, I think that would be certainly a step in the right direction, because obviously what we're trying to determine is, how exposed are we based on, uh, Clayett's previous projections? Because even if it's 651,000 she projected, and again, she was right at the end of 24, the 500, 495, or whatever it was, deficit. What would, um, where would we be at? Um, because if we go into, I don't have it in front of me, but I can pull it, 2.9 or whatever was one for 27, we're headed, that arrow's headed down. So that line, if we charted revenue and expenditure like we used to, um, that line's got to be, revenue's got to be going down. And since it hits below expense, then we're in a deficit, and that would just keep creeping based on the projections. I believe that's to be true, but only Clay could answer that, because she created the report.
And I am working, um, with BSNA to find how to do the, the historical, because, um, again, when I came in, I had some BSNA knowledge, but those historical records are in there. Um, so I had to put in a ticket to say, how can I go back further than my reports will allow me to do? So I am working on that, on a projection that I can do a full look back to then, obviously, you have to look backward before you can look forward. You have to see what the trend is. Then you also have to say, where would we be if we did not have that, uh, $10 million ARPA slash DGS funds? So you have to do the look back, including that, and then you have to do the look back and remove that, to see where are, where are you trending? So then you can use those numbers to then forecast to the future. So I am working on that.
Well, I'm just going to agree with you at the moment, but that 1.8, whatever it was, million in GSP funds, Clay had used that to offset the 651,000 this year that she projected on paper back in seven, uh, December 17, I think that, that was the date of the report. But yes, taking out the 1.8, whatever it is, would certainly be relevant, because that is sort of like cushion. But the inflows, what we have coming in from taxes, I remember from Angie, and I pulled up the report, I wasn't prepared for this, was that our increase for 25 was only 500,000. So I don't know what it would be for 26. I mean, in other words, it, it wasn't a lot at that point. Um, and unless, I mean, it seems like when energy is being defunded, I don't know how it's hitting the sta-, I don't know what's going on there. We have a couple of townships that are heavily involved in that. But I know the multiplier changed, and Angie would probably know that in a projection in terms, if that were to go through with what's on the books, what would that bring in the county? Because outside that, we don't have any revenue coming in, certainly from revenue sharing, that is up in the air. Um, and our expenses everywhere, every county, if you read the last couple, uh, MAC newsletters, Eaton County and others, the expenses are, are increasing, I mean, bypassing, uh, the revenue. Which, at that point, the Eaton County folks had to decide, you know, they were looking at, um, mandatory services and other things. So just continuation, Chairman, of the financial, uh, position of the county, it's still relatively unknown. I guess my last question is, if you ask that question to Clay, what does her eyes look like when she answers that?
What does her eyes?
State of the, state of the county in terms of financial status. How does she look at you?
I guess I don't understand the question. You're asking what the look is in her eyes?
Absolutely. Does she look horrified, or does she look happy? She came back to the county because she was concerned about the county's financial position. I'm assuming that's what she's working on, right?
Well, actually, she's working on, she, she's working on many things. She's working on, um, showing me where things are, showing me where do I find, um, the historical records. She's working on, here's the list of things that, um, should be done by, to this, to date, and we're checking them off, making sure things are...
You have a punch list of things you need, but how much time is being spent on understanding, on her understanding of what she projected? Because if we get, end of the year, the transfers out, and she has her, I have the paperwork, the transfers out are enormous. Um, if you didn't have transfers out, we're in good shape. She, she had a report on that. But now that's getting older and older. That's back in December. Um, so again, not to delay this, Chairman, just once again, trying to sense out where we're headed based on her projections.
So I guess, yeah, if I'm not, well, true. We need to have a follow-up on her projections. I mean, she projected that last, that certain time.
Yes.
Now it's time to bring up, follow up on the projections, look at everything that's coming in, and go and see if we were right on, or maybe we handled more than we thought. You know, just follow up on the projections that she, she gave us.
Yes, and those are, that is in process.
Okay.
But I wanted to be able to give you something today.
No, that's...
So this is what we have today. And if you, I appreciate the feedback on what does that, you know, the, the two percentages, and then the lower percentage. I will figure that out, and...
Chair?
Come back to you.
I have a question for Erica. Erica, on the 215 fund in front of the court, they've, if I'm reading it right, they've used 96% of their budget already?
No, um, so their revenue, they've received 51.62%, and their expenditures are at 47.73%, which is below the expected 58.08%. That 96.53 is what Commissioner Bardwell was asking, and again, I exported this and, and, um, removed the things I didn't think that, that were needed in here. I, you know, tried to shorten the report for you and provide different columns to make it easy for commissioners. Um, a quick 11-page, the original report was double that. So this is, that's not correct. So that 96.3, I'm assuming, is if you take them together and do the math, but, one second.
It's really a percent of the amended budget against the, where you say we're at, you know, 731. So this particular example, it's 95084, uh, divided into 91.
Correct.
It means you're 96%. Um, it's a sort of a, an interesting number, but I'm not sure of its relevancy, but if you look at it that way, just using the, the columns.
Yeah, so that's taking in their current revenue minus expenditures is the 91,786, and it is taking that against, as Commissioner Bardwell, um, read, the 2025 amended budget. So it is looking only at the net.
Okay.
So the current net is 96.53%. However, they've only received 51.62% of revenue, and only 47% of expenditures. So those numbers are not exactly true in the grand scheme of the entire year. They're true to date.
Okay.
So I agree with Mr. Bardwell, Commissioner Bardwell. I think that if I remove that percentage there, it would help you and be less cumbersome.
Well, at least to see if you can get an understanding from BSNA. What, what exactly, is this exactly what the meaning is, or was there a different? I don't know what the intent was, but it just seems like an odd number.
Well, that's what I was getting at, it seemed like an odd number. Okay, thanks, Erica.
Yes.
Anything else for Erica? Anything else on primary finance technology? Anything else on ongoing finance? Seeing none, all about? I did ask for technology, and you didn't.
Well, yeah, we're, we're happy to get a new employee, sir.
Is we you, or we? Just checking, seeing who we was. No further, or courts.
I'll turn it over to Billy Brown, and, uh, Commissioner Lutz.
I don't have anything, listen. Mike has anything. Back to you, sir.
Personnel, first, a good child. Personnel, first to get you out. Other businesses necessary municipal employees retirement systems MERS Annual Conference.
That was also put on the agenda at my request. So in prior years, we have sent an employer in an employee representative. And it's my understanding in the past, we did some sort of a nomination for the representatives. We have not done that yet. I wanted to talk to you before we did that as, do we want to send a representative this year? Do we want to send one? Do we want to send two? Or do we want to forego it this year? So in the packet was not only the flyer, but also the email that I received with a breakdown of all of the items that would be covered. So improving data quality, record-keeping, transition, the 2024 annual actuarial evaluations, navigating market volatility, employer reporting, Secure 2.0. We do not, I don't believe we have a MERS 457, so I don't believe that would be necessary.
How did we, how did we pick the person to go for it? You said we did that in the past?
It's been a minute since I was here in that role, but I believe we asked for department heads to nominate one of their, one of their employees to go as the employee representative, and then there was some sort of a vote or something?
So the employees, usually there's an email distributed to all employees asking if you would like to be the employee representative, to please submit your name as a, as a potential. Once those potentials, and Shelley, you can probably answer this better, sorry. I'm trying to, I'm trying to. I will turn it over to the expert in the field.
So Jody, Jody is correct. So if an employee is interested, they would put their name in the hat and people would vote. What seems to have happened over the last couple of years is MERS isn't really providing information that the employee can bring back and really share. They're doing everything with like a QR code and I haven't been now in a couple of years, but last year, I believe Angie Howe stepped in when Neil resigned because he was the one signed up to go. There really wasn't any flyers. I'm not saying it's not worth sending someone. We're just not sure at this point because last year, both representatives came back and really didn't have anything to share. So as far as the actuarial report, we have access to that. I didn't get the email, Erica, so I don't know what else you said they were offering.
Improving data quality, record-keeping, transition, navigating market volatility, and employer reporting. And then the email goes on to explain all of those items. And that was on the employer side. I did not get information on what would be offered from.
For the employees.
Right, on the employee side.
So we wanted to bring it to the board and.
Pleasure to board out now, what do you say?
I would think if anyone would go, it would be you based on what you explained. And I looked at the agenda, some of the information, I thought it's pretty high level. I'm not sure what would be transferable to any of us unless we were more involved. Interesting enough, in, this is what caught my eye. Can I understand this? In 2024, the defined benefit portfolio outperform, was 7.72% upperforming our actuary assumed rate of return of 6.93. That's not saying anything about defined contribution, which we're on. I mean, you would think they'd have them both here, but why are they just focusing on one? I don't know.
So my answer to that is, the actuarial runs, excuse me. So we just received 2024's actuarial. So they do that the year behind and based on how it's invested differently. Defined contribution is like, like a 457, basically. So that's an ongoing, that we don't receive an annual report, we receive quarterly reports. So I believe to answer your question, Commissioner Bardwell, that it's a deep dive because of how defined benefit is structured.
Well, with that, because we're defined contribution, wouldn't it, wouldn't the employees want to see a history, like say a three, whatever we were on, when we started that? Where are we at in terms of return on investment?
It depends on the employee because they, they can manage their own investments. So they go on the portal and look at their own investments.
So what would be a benchmark that would benefit them all? I know it depends on their individuals, but what would be a benchmark then in your mind that they would get some information in terms of performance?
So for me, so I am defined contribution, I logged in and looked, and I think in 2024, my return rate was like 9. something percent. And it's based on how I work with, when Andrew Smith comes to see like your potential retirement date, they try to invest based on that. So defined contribution employees actually can change their investments however they see fit.
Well, based on your analysis, the defined benefit folks took it, took a hit. You outperformed in defined contribution.
When Andrew Smith was here, I think when he was here, maybe February, he had actually said that the counties that offer both defined benefit and defined contribution, many employees are going to define contribution because they have 25, 30 years to figure out how they want to invest their money. Where current defined benefits for employees that are offering them, he said some are offering like a 1.25 multiplier, so it's almost not worth it with as volatile as that market's been. But then again, long-term, we don't know what that's going to bring, so.
Mr. Chair, Judy Cottrell, that's her.
Judy Cottrell, those?
Yes.
Go ahead, Judy.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I feel it's important that you do have an employee representative attend because there are different things that are offered on the employee side than would be offered on the employer side. I would be happy to volunteer if there's something, you know, provided in a QR code. I'd be happy to print that off myself and, and bring back and distribute to any employees that are interested in that information. I just. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Chairman, I would concur with that. If there was an interest, I would.
Yeah, that's.
That would be very.
If there's an interest, yeah.
So we can send an email out quickly this week. We just received the invitation from MERS and I think our deadline is approaching very fast.
For the early bird, yes, our deadline is approaching fast. It's actually.
I think it's Friday.
I believe so, yes. I apologize, I'm trying to find it on the PDF.
I believe it is Friday, so we would have to.
August 15th, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
So let's, let's roll out and off to go, we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other businesses necessary? Public comment? Everybody wants to just to board this morning? Anybody want to just to board this morning on public comment? Here are none. Let's record show the public comment was offered and we had no participants this morning. With that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Of course. The more likely, the more likely to get you out. So adjourn, we the whole meeting this morning. Any more discussion? All in fairness, aye?
Aye.
Adjourn, thanks everyone.